So, opening the meeting of December, Selectman's meeting of December 9th, here at the police station. I'd like to welcome back John Powderly. And, uh...
Welcome.
Maybe we can jump right into the Selectman's announcements. I don't know if you want to hear those, Rich?
I didn't want to make things. All right.
Recording?
There's some great things going on in town over this month. First things is, at the library, the teen volunteers are needed to help Ms. Teresa in December. If you'd like to volunteer, please call 508-947-9028. At the library, they're having a noon, noon, Eve party on Tuesday, December 31st at 11:30 a.m. There'll be music, dancing, and refreshments, make-your-own-party hats, a photo booth, and more. Dessert donations will be greatly appreciated. Please call 508-947-9028. Just so you know, that's for the kids, not for the adults.
Sorry, Maureen.
Saturday, the 21st, they're showing the Polar Express at 11 a.m. And, please, wear your pajamas. Kids again. Senior Center. Lakeville Police Department will be putting on a free breakfast for the seniors on Thursday, December 19th, at 9:00 a.m. Please call the Senior Center at 508-947-7224 to sign up by December 13. Then, at the Senior Center again, there'll be a New Year's celebration on Friday, December 28th, during the COA Cafe time. On Saturday, uh, we're actually too late for this, I think. Sorry. That window shouldn't be on there. All the Glitters Holiday Shopping Event will be, take place at Loom Pond Lodge on Friday, December 13th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And on Saturday, December 14th, between 10:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. The Final Master Plan Implementation Committee Public Workshop will be held on Saturday, January 11th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Assawamse Elementary School.
The only other thing I would like to add is this Friday, we start our Selectman's hours at, um...
Yes, you do.
The COA.
From 9:00 to 10:00.
9:00 to 10:00. Anyone wants to come in and ask questions? I believe I'll be the first one up.
Sure.
Okay.
Tracy, did we get that on the website yet?
I think so. I think we did.
All right. The next thing is any public input? Anyone? Okay. That was easy. And now, we have Maureen Candido, our Town Administrator, with her report.
Okay. Briefly, going through what's going on at Town Hall. Last week, we started our budget workshops with our department heads, just going over with the town accountant, some of the budget lines from last year and equating them to this year. Some of the things were moving around, most of the things are staying the same. And we're looking towards making sure that everyone's on the same page as we build our budget this year. We're also looking to start the Capital Expenditures Committee. Katie Goodfellow is going to come before you on the December 30th meeting, I believe. And then, we can start to put that committee together, have them ready for January. Again, capital expenditures are things over $10,000 and have a useful life of over five years. All three union contracts are up, and we'll begin the negotiation process in January. And as Rich alluded to, the Master Plan is wrapping up and having their public outreach meeting at Assawamse in January. If anyone has not attended any of the Master Plan planning events, they're really excellent, and they're a great view into what Lakeville's view of the future is. It's a good chance for people to get some say on how Lakeville will look going into the future, without actually having to be on any boards. And I think it's a, it's a good use of an hour on a Saturday. To better support our boards and committees, we're looking to fill a full-time position of a floating board secretary. This will be a stipend position, which will be different than we've used going forward. We're kind of modeling from some other towns. We recognize that our boards need a little bit more support, getting their notes out in a timely manner, and we want to do what we can to make sure that we are supporting them. Permitting software for the building apartment and conservation is now accepting electronic payment. So, I ran through and I tried it myself. Took me 45 seconds to set up an account, find my address, and click off just whatever project that I was working on. This is going to make a big difference for people, as opposed to having to come run in and run to the building apartment and print out their form, and then go pay there. They can do it right in the comfort of their home. It's a, it's a good step forward for the efficiencies of the town. Fee structures in town? We're starting an assessment of other towns internally, and we want to fill out some forms to let us know what all the fees are in our town. Everything that we charge for every service and why we charge the fee we do. We want to make sure that we're priced correctly and that we're not charging less for fees than it costs to actually complete the inspection or the service. So, I think that'll be something that we're doing in the next couple of months. And then, our plan to follow up is we will meet with the owner of the hospital property after the New Year, and we'll be asking for him to answer some questions that people in town have passed on and questions that the board has. And that's it for the Town Administrator's report.
Okay.
John, just so you know, we, I brought it up at the couple meetings ago, our meeting with Derek, and he didn't want to come to meet with the whole board. And so, Leah designated me to try to meet with him, but he didn't want to meet again in December, so he's put it off until January. But I do think it's important for us to get some updates as to what's going on over there, especially with some of the properties that, six of the properties have been auctioned off at this point. And so, as we see, you can see, the funeral home is already under construction, but I think it's good to try to reach out to these people ahead of time, these developers and builders or whatever, so we kind of know, you know, what's going on and what they're proposing.
Yeah, I saw that, I saw that on the earlier meetings.
Okay, just so you know.
The, on Maureen's note there, the contracts, the union contracts paying up, is to, we need, obviously, to meet an executive session prior to develop an action plan.
Correct.
Appoint a lead person to get into the negotiations under the purview of the other two Selectmen. So, we need to do that sooner rather than later, so we're ready to...
Yeah, I had it.
What opposition?
I had already mentioned that to Maureen.
Yeah.
Don't think Mark Maureen...
I don't think so.
Have we sent the letters out to the union?
We did. We had KP Law send them out, was it the week before last?
Okay.
So, they should send them out, so everyone should be in possession of that letter now.
Great. Thanks.
Just, what is the date of the Master Plan?
It is Ju...
January 11th.
January 11th. I wish it was June.
10 to 12 at Assawamse.
Yep. And, I don't know if you've gone to them before, but they have little stations, and they're going to have little areas where you can learn about some of the things that they're doing and proposing. It's pretty interactive and pretty interesting, and I think it's a really good place for the people of the town that want to have a say in what goes in the town.
Yeah. A lot of hard work going on there, too.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, number four on the agenda is to review and approve Selectman meeting minutes. So, John and I, we're both at the July 15th and October 7th, so maybe we can take those first.
Should we make a motion that we accept the July 15th and the October 7th meetings?
Second. Any discussion, anything? No? Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And the November 25th meeting, would have been Rich and myself.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of November 25th, 2019.
Okay. A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to, either now or under whole business, just get into the explanation of the overlay account, as Rich addressed on page one of that meeting, November 25th meeting. So, I can either do it now or under whole business, if allowed to.
You're allowed to bring that into rule business, John, if you want. You can bring it up, or I can bring it up.
Yeah. Okay. So, we'll save that for rule business. All right. It's 6:40, so we have hearing, well, started scheduled for 7:00 p.m., so let's just go through some other stuff until we get to 7:00 p.m. Uh, let's see. Anyone? We'll do number 11. How does that sound? Discuss the upcoming MMA trade show, which is a big trade show that goes on, that the MMA puts on for all, for everyone in the state. This is just on here because I'm curious if anyone's going to go, not going to go, if the, anyone from the Selectman's office is going to go. Just kind of curious if there's going to be any participation.
I'm not going.
You're not going?
I don't think so.
You're not going? Not going? Okay.
If you need me to, I can, but I hadn't planned on it.
Okay. Well, I just didn't know if anyone, I think there is a couple of people that are going, but I don't think anyone from the Selectman's office. Okay.
If that changes and you need me to, I can.
Okay. No, I mean, I, you know. Um, I don't know if we should get into number 10, but I guess we'll jump to number 10 right now, because we still have almost 20 minutes, so... All right. So, Maureen, I know that you've been talking to Town Council...
Yes.
...about the freeze, so if you want to give us an update, that would be great.
So, currently, we have just finished up with that six-month freeze, or moratorium, self-composed moratorium, on creating new HCAs for the town of Lakeville. Because we have some upcoming zoning, some planned upcoming zoning issues to come at our next town meeting, the Town Council agreed that it might be prudent, in order to not sign any new HCAs until we figure out if that strategy is going to change anything materially for any HCAs going forward. And that way, we don't have any outliers or anything, you know, if the zoning changes from that. So, it would be a vote of the board to continue the freeze until the vote of town meeting.
Okay. Does anyone want to talk about the freeze at all?
I make a motion to continue with the freeze. Marijuana, temporary freeze of the marijuana host agreements.
Okay. I'll second that, mostly for the reasons that Maureen said, because we do have some zoning stuff coming up. But we, we're continuing without an end date, basically?
Well, we haven't set, the only problem is, we haven't set the town meeting date. So, if we set the town meeting date, we could put the end date in there as the town meeting date. Or, we could just say the town meeting date and, you know, leave it as that.
Okay. So, I'm okay with that, then. Motion? You made it. I second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just have, Maureen?
Yes. We're going to find a way to make this work.
I reviewed all the host agreements, and looking at the host agreements, that some of them are different than others. But one of the things that, I know, I mentioned this to you before, and I think you tried to do something about it, is that the marijuana host agreements say that we can charge back for legal fees.
Yes.
And we can charge back for other items, including, you know, meetings and stuff like that. I'd like to know how much that is.
Okay.
And if we have notified them that we are going to bill them, because they should have been billed all along.
So, we have been billing for legal fees. Lorraine has a spreadsheet that she can get to the Board of Selectmen.
This is recently though, right?
Yeah, but we...
It hasn't been billed in the past.
But we have it backdated, so anything that was a legal bill in the past...
Okay.
...was all caught up on. But as far as for events or anything like that, I have no billing for any events, per se.
Okay. What about all the engineering costs associated with those projects? We can bill back for those, too.
Okay. Let me ask Town Council on the specifics on where our thresholds are, and then we can assign...
Well, there's no thresholds on that.
Okay.
Done.
I'll follow up.
Thank you.
Okay. That's that. Give me 15 minutes. All right, well, let's just do the...
We can do the number 13 here.
Yeah. The request from the town clerk to approve warrants, the warrant for annual town election, which is going to be April 6th. So, the town clerk has submitted the warrant, which is attached for us to see, for the annual town election to be held on April 6th, 2020, for the Selectmen to approve. Also submitted is a list of people whose terms will expire in 2020.
I make a motion to approve the Lakeville Annual Town Election, which will be held on Monday, April 6th, 2020, from 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the following locations, Precinct 1, 2, and 3, at Ted Williams Camp, Loom Pond Lodge, 28 Precinct Street, Lakeville, Mass. The registered voters will elect the following positions into office. One-year term, one moderator, one board of assessor. Five-year term, one plenary board member. Three-year term, one selectman, one board of assessor member, one board of health member, one cemetery commission member, one finance committee member, two park commission members, one library trustee. Oh, one more, I'm sorry. The board also to include the annual election ballot for the Free Town Lakeville District Member, Lakeville, one three-year term, Free Town, two three-year terms.
So, that was your motion, right?
Yes.
I will second. Any conversation? Anybody? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay.
6:47.
6:47. Where can we knock out?
18 would be quick.
Yep. We'll do number 18. Agenda number 18 is to vote to accept the resignation of Catherine DeRocher, that's how we say it, from Finance Committee, and discuss filling the vacancy. So, Catherine DeRocher has submitted a letter of resignation from the Finance Committee as she's moving out of town. Her term expires in April 2020. So, I'd entertain a motion to accept the resignation letter from Catherine DeRocher. Anyone? Do I have to read it?
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor?
Any discussion first? Oh, you wanted to discuss that?
Oh, I didn't, I didn't. Okay. Fine, we can discuss it. I didn't know if anyone wants me to read the letter. It just says, "I'm writing to inform you of my resignation, be moving out of town, and understand you're beginning budget discussions and would hope to give you time to fill the seat early in the budget season." So, that was kind of nice, so we can try to replace that position. So...
Madam Chair, we need a second on that. Thank you.
Second. Any other conversation on this? Anybody?
So, do we want to make it so we vote to put a time limit on accepting these in order to facilitate a quicker turnaround time?
I would say we probably ask people that are interested to, you know, put it on the website, and that probably by December 30th, I think, submit their names, so we can review those names, and ask the Finance Committee if they want to come to our meeting to approve that. Prove that person.
Madam Chair, due to the holidays, the deadline for the December 30th meeting will be December 19th. Okay?
Yeah, it doesn't get a slash time.
Yeah, that's tight.
What's our first meeting in January?
13th? 13th?
The night?
Whatever that Monday is.
Yes, I think it's the 13th. January 13th.
December 30th, two, in two weeks is what, the 13th?
All right, then we'll keep it open until January 13th, unfortunately.
Well, do we want to have it end December 30th for the January 13th meeting?
All right, give it another week anyways.
Yeah, we'll give it a week. Anyone? John? Anything?
No.
Okay. That's fine. We'll give it the extra week.
January 6th.
Yep. And that way, we'll be able to make an appointment on the first January meeting. Yeah. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
6:50.
6:50? Okay. Um, let's just do number 14.
Yeah, it's going to take a little bit.
Yeah, it is, but...
Probably do the 19.
Okay. Let's do that one. So, number 19 is a job description to be approved by the Board of Selectmen for a recording secretary. Town Administrator and our human resources person, Linda Dunphy, has been working on a job description for recording secretary. Again, we're doing this so that we can try to help our boards stay on top of their minutes if someone needs some help and they need someone to fill in. So, I don't know if anyone has any comments on the job description. Do you want to just make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the job description, reporting secretary.
Okay. I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Business, old business. Everything else is kind of...
17 would be pretty quick.
Yeah, I was going to say, I honestly am not super familiar with 17, so...
Yeah, it'd be pretty quick, but not many.
So, let's jump into number 17. Review and vote to approve annual dancing on weekdays, public entertainment on Sundays, livery and coin-operated amusement licenses.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to, the following license, a livery license, JP Limousine Service expires December 31st, 2020, one vehicle. Dancing on weekends, this is ridiculous, but...
Weekdays.
All licenses expire December 31st, 2020. LaBaron Operating Company, LLC. DBA, LaBaron Hills Country Club. Hawaiian, DBA Orchard of Hawaii Restaurant. Lakeville Golf, Inc. DBA Lakeville Golf Club. Lakeville Erie, 3994 Fraternal Orders of Eagles, Inc. Coin-operated amusements expire December 31st, 2020. Lakeville Erie, 3994 Fraternal Order of the Eagles, two machines. Lakeville Golf, Inc. DBA Lakeville Golf Club, one machine. Public entertainment on Sunday for Sundays during 2020, licenses expire December 31st, 2020. Lakeville, LaBaron Operating Company, LLC. DBA, LaBaron Hills Country Club. Hawaiian, DBA Orchard of Hawaii Restaurant. Lakeville Golf, Inc. DBA Lakeville Golf Club. Lakeville Erie, 3994 Fraternal Orders of Eagles, Inc.
Second. Any conversation? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. What's the time?
Sorry, you got six more minutes.
All right.
16 should be pretty quick.
Okay.
For common victualers.
We'll go to 16. So, review and vote to renew common victular licenses for various businesses in Lakeville. Someone want to make a motion? Want to make a motion?
Okay. The common victular licenses for renewal, the expiration date of December 30th as follows. Baldi's Pizza, Inc. Cisco Corporation, Inc. DBA Cisco, Sisco's Pizza. Aramark Educational Services, LLC. For the Free Town Lakeville School. The Sunshine Cafe. Royal Pizza. Something brewing. Book Cafe, Inc. Tan, Ted, Tan.
Tan.
DBA Subway. Nextine, LLC for Ocean Spray. The Back Nine Club, LLC, DBA, The Back Nine Club. Bakoi Brook Golf Club, LLC, DBA, Bakoi Brook Pub. Hawaii, DBA Orchard of Hawaii Restaurant. Lakeville Eagles, Lakeville Eagles. Lakeville Virtual Entertainment Group, DBA. The Broken T Virtual Golf. Lakeville Golf Club, Inc. DBA, Lakeville Golf Club. Assawamse Golf Club, LLC. DBA, LaBaron Hill Country Club. Ken &amp; L, Inc. DBA Saga Sushi. And there was three that still haven't submitted their, four of them.
That's the one that I redid. There are two left. JJ's Sifu Drive-In.
Okay.
And Saga Sushi. We'll have them for the...
Okay. So, Sandy, LLC Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah.
Corporate Chefs, Inc. Talbots.
Okay. Any conversation on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Business, old business. Everything else is kind of...
17 would be pretty quick.
Yeah, I was going to say, I honestly am not super familiar with 17, so...
Yeah, it'd be pretty quick, but not many.
Jump into number 17. Review and vote to approve annual dancing on weekdays, public entertainment on Sundays, livery and coin-operated amusement licenses.
Okay. I'll make a motion to, the following license, a livery license, JP Limousine Service expires December 31st, 2020, one vehicle. Dancing on weekends, this is ridiculous, but...
Weekdays.
All licenses expire December 31st, 2020. LaBaron Operating Company, LLC. DBA, LaBaron Hills Country Club. Hawaii Corp, DBA Orchard of Hawaii Restaurant. Lakeville Golf Club, Inc. DBA, Lakeville Golf Club. Lakeville Erie, 3994 Fraternal Orders of Eagles, Inc.
Second. Any conversation? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. What's the time?
Sorry, you got six more minutes.
All right.
16 should be pretty quick.
Okay.
For common victulars.
We'll go to 16. So, review and vote to renew common victular licenses for various businesses in Lakeville. Someone want to make a motion? Want to make a motion?
Okay. The common victular licenses for renewal, the expiration date of December 30th as follows. Baldi's Pizza, Inc. Cisco Corporation, Inc. DBA Cisco, Sisco's Pizza. Aramark Educational Services, LLC. For the Free Town Lakeville School. The Sunshine Cafe. Royal Pizza. Something brewing. Book Cafe, Inc. Tan, Ted, Tan.
Tan.
DBA Subway. Nextine, LLC for Ocean Spray. The Back Nine Club, LLC, DBA, The Back Nine Club. Bakoi Brook Golf Club, LLC, DBA, Bakoi Brook Pub. Hawaii, DBA Orchard of Hawaii Restaurant. Lakeville Eagles, Lakeville Eagles. Lakeville Virtual Entertainment Group, DBA. The Broken T Virtual Golf. Lakeville Golf Club, Inc. DBA, Lakeville Golf Club. Assawamse Golf Club, LLC. DBA, LaBaron Hill Country Club. Ken &amp; L, Inc.
I had Lorraine pull me up what our fee is for disposing of things not in the designated area. It's $50, and it was adopted in 1977.
So, illegal dumping, the fine is $50?
$50.
I think that there's been other cases where the DEP has been involved, and they put out cameras, and their fees are enormous, thousands of dollars, so
Yes. No, this is just Lakeville's
Right, that's Lakeville's, but they became the enforcer, that is, once you get on camera, then you're saying, not only come back and pick up what you dumped, pick up everything around there, oh, we're gonna hit you with a multi-thousand dollar fine, so
Just wanted to
They get involved in that.
Wanted to let you know what we do. And that could be something that, you know, if we had some problem areas, we can either, you know, make sure we're alerting DEP or
Right.
you know, do any other type of trail cameras or anything like that for ourselves.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, that was it. Thank you. And It is seven, okay, so, seven o'clock to meet with Mark Walters of Sun Multisport Events. We also asked that the police chief, Matt Perkins, and Lieutenant Sean Joyce be in attendance to weigh in any way they feel about this, and also to have the Parks Department folks with us too, so we can, this is for the triathlon that takes place in Lakeville. So, we just asked everyone to be here today so that we can have all our questions answered. So, we had tabled it last time, Mark, and I know since that time you did submit, I think, the certificate of insurance?
Yes.
Okay.
I also provided, I sent to Tracy, I thought it would be helpful, I've been doing business with Lakeville for many years, it would be valuable for members of the board, people on the campus have a little bit of a brief history of Sun Multisport Events, background on me, I'd then like to address some of the questions that were raised at the last meeting, and then jump right into discussing the Patriot Half, bike course which comes through Lakeville, and then the Cranberry Tri-Fest which is based here.
Yeah, I'd like to do the one that's based here first.
Sure, that's fine.
Try to keep the two separate, I know we may end up overlapping a little, but that's not mine. So
Can I go to the presentation?
Yeah, sure, yep.
Can you cue that up, Tracy, please? Great, thank you. So, again, just a real brief history, Sun Multisport Events, which is the company that puts on these races, was established in 2002. The first event and only event at the time was the Cranberry Country Triathlon, as it was called at that time here at the Ted Williams Camp. Fast forward to today, my company consists of four triathlons, the two we'll be talking about tonight, four trail races and a conference. Collectively, across all those events, I have about 5,000 athletes that are participating in these races and conference. We have earned national recognition from Triathlon Business International, as well as Competitor Magazine, voting by triathletes for our races. So, our Patriot Half has won numerous awards, we've won Best Tri Series, and that's a function of the reputation that we have earned and built up over this many years for putting on safe, high-quality events, organized, detailed, you know, always well-supported with volunteers, and, you know, we like to stage these from scenic areas and make it a fun day. And then just a little on me, so, I didn't actually start the first race, I became owner of Sun Multisport Events in 2005. For the next seven years, I basically, you know, was kind of working nights and mornings, weekends, while holding down another job, a full-time job, while I was building up this Sun Multisport Event Business. In 2012, I then made the transition, and I've been doing, managing Sun Multisport full-time ever since. In addition to my own events that are under Sun Multisport, I'm also helped, contracted to work a few other events in the area. The American Cancer Society's Bicycle Battle on Cancer, which is a bike ride that starts and ends in Marlboro, Mass. A new ride for the Michael Liznow Respite Center, Harvest Ride for Respite, which will be the inaugural event, will be next year. And then the New England Kids' Triathlon, which is based in Cambridge, Massachusetts, the largest kids' triathlon in the Northeast. And I'm a husband and father of four, and it's like two daughters in that picture there, and I live in Westwood. So, there were some questions last time about donations and me being for-profit, and so I just wanted to address those directly. So, for the Patriot Half and the Cranberry Tri-Fest, as I mentioned last time, I work with a variety of different volunteer groups who, in exchange for their, you know, assistance at the finish line, at registration, on the run course, I make a donation back to their organization. Some of these I've been working with for many years, like St. Joseph's Axe, Middleboro, Dumeleye, they have been part of our events every year, quite honestly. Couple of groups here in Lakeville, the Aponitwood High School Boosters, who I've worked with for a couple of years, and this was the first year working with the Decker Group. I do, I provide donations directly to the towns through which we go through. And then there's some, you know, other charitable programs, I call them, for example, we, every Veterans Day, I'll, you know, for three days this year, anyone that signed up for our races, I donate $25 to for our troops in Tonk, so that's another charitable impact. And then, certainly, the venues we're at, Cathedral Camp and Ted Williams, you know, I'm paying a rental fee there, there's some sort of donation per se. But collectively, these venues, these charities, these organizations, the financial impact on them for all of 2019 across these two events is just under $35,000. Next slide, Tracy, please. So, just a few other things I wanted to note, you know, obviously there's also additional economic impacts, I don't have a economic impact study that I can provide, but certainly, these events, when they bring people into town, there's, you know, value to local businesses. I try to support local businesses, I've been working with Winbergs for years, Spark VRS is, you know, new here to Lakeville. But, you know, whether it's meals, gas, whether it's me, my staff, the people that are coming in, there's that impact. Again, I don't have a number, but it's something positive. We take running green events serious, for many years I've been working with Athletes for a Fit Planet, where we take the pledge of sustainability, which means we make a commitment to recycling, composting, and minimizing waste. So, we do that at these events. And last but not least, you know, these events have tremendous positive influence on the participants. For many, doing triathlon is an effort to live an active, healthy lifestyle, we have people that are, you know, battling their own personal demons perhaps, fighting cancer, whatever it may be. You know, some of these events are fairly emotional, that picture there on the bottom right is the last finisher in the Patriot Half last year. She's essentially being mobbed by a group that was waiting for her, they trained and raced together to raise money for a friend of theirs who had cancer. So, you know, there's a lot of positive benefit that comes from these events financially, I think health and wellness, again, as I mentioned. But I also realize it's not all rainbows and unicorns, which is why I'm here. I know there's been some discussion and concerns about traffic and whatnot, so I have made a number of changes, which I started to discuss with you all the last time I was here, and I'm here to go into more detail tonight. I guess we'll, so, these are summary slides, but we'll do Cranberry first, since that's the question. So, the Cranberry Tri-Fest is a two-day affair, we have a race on Saturday and a race on Sunday. So, I have not made any changes to the courses on Saturday, but for Sunday, I designed a new run course, which is designed to eliminate overlap on Precinct and Pickens. And, sorry, bossing me around here, Tracy, but if you wouldn't mind forwarding
I'm sorry, Lorraine.
You can talk to me.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm getting it, sorry. So, if you go back one slide, oops.
Oh, I'll get used to this, hold on.
So, this is what it looked like in 2019, so the red arrows, you can kind of see in the upper right corner where Ted Williams Camp is, the red arrows represent the run course, and the blue arrows represent the end of the bike course. So, you can see where the runners are essentially running south on Kingman, make that left onto Pickens, and that's where now you have runners and cyclists on the, there was a period of overlap there. If we go to the next slide, so this is the change, so no change to the bike course. The bikers will come in from that same, you know, over Kingman, down Pickens to Precinct, but the run course has been changed. So now they'll, once again, leave out along Precinct, go up Montgomery, then turn left on Hill. I think that's Katie's Way, where they'll essentially do a U-turn, come back, go up Barstow, and then they come back down Precinct. So, this design eliminates the overlap, which I know is a source of concern. I have presented this to Lieutenant Joyce, who said, yes, this looks good, let's try this. So, that's where we are with Cranberry, if you want to discuss Cranberry now, or I can continue on with what the changes have been made for Patriot.
Sure, just, we'll let you keep going, and then we'll
Sure.
kind of split it up again.
We skip back, so that, oops. One more down, please, there we go. So, that's the 2019 Patriot Half Bike Course, so, this is a 28-mile, the bike loop on this event is 56 miles, so they were doing two loops of a 28-mile bike course. They essentially started here at Cathedral Camp, they did just a big clockwise loop. What circle represents about 15 miles through Lakeville, that was completed two times, so you essentially had 30 miles of the 56 miles on the course. Cyclists were on these roads essentially from 7:30 to about 12:30. The next slide shows the new course that's been proposed for 2020. So, here, the cyclist will again leave Cathedral Camp, and they'll come up County, make a right on Highland to Bedford Street, right on Bedford Street, left on Long Point, and then go out into Middleboro. And then this loop here essentially is done twice, and then they come back that way. So, they only come through Lakeville for those first, about mile, about mile two to mile 10, and it's probably like 7:30 to 10 a.m. Is the expected time of that travel.
Okay. So, let's work on just the Tri-Fest that goes, starts, ends in Lakeville, because we have all our folks here to, you know. I do understand that that's one of the biggest fundraisers that our Parks Department does, I don't know if one of you guys from the Parks Department could speak?
It is currently the largest fundraiser.
Okay, alright, so, any problems in the past, any issues, any, anything that
I've been on the board for five and a half years. In my time on the board, you know, it's been nothing but a good relationship back and forth. I mean, you can't help it, of course, in the weekend, little tiny things, but
Yeah, sure.
so small that I couldn't think of. It's been a great relationship so far.
Okay. And we also have Chief of Police here, and Lieutenant Joyce, I don't know if either one of you want to speak too. Come on up to the podium.
I did have some stats that were forwarded to Tracy earlier this afternoon, I don't know if you got them.
The incidents, I think, is one of them, yeah.
So, that is the incidents related to police and fire during these events, and they go back to 2010.
Yeah.
And about average, it's like about two incidents, two calls per event. There are some events where there's really no impact on public safety, but we do look at this from a public safety standpoint. We've worked with Mr. Walter in the past to identify where the trouble spots are, he's been good at changing the route to address those concerns. He's been good about, you know, putting detail offices in certain dangerous locations. But from a public safety standpoint, as you see right there, you can't eliminate injuries and accidents.
Right. Yeah, it actually looks like 2017, 2018 were pretty, pretty incident-free. So, and last year was like a couple of medicals, so Okay, so, you're okay with the route? I know Lieutenant Joyce has been working on the route and everything, because we, because it's two days, so
Correct. So, there, with the first one, the one that's in June, the Patriot, the one that comes through, Lieutenant Joyce identified the spots where detail offices will be needed. From, you know, from looking at it from public safety, I think, you know, the message needs to get out to the participants of this race that, number one, it's not a closed course, it's an open course, there's motor vehicles that are out there. And we are out there directing traffic at certain locations to let them break the law, to like go through a stop sign, or to drive excessively, because bicyclists, they have to maintain the rules of the road. They're just as liable as a motor vehicle driver, they have to stop at stop signs, they have to signal when safe to do so. They can't drive on the wrong side of the road. So, I think the message needs to get out to the participants that this course is open to traffic, and they just can't be driving and riding out of control. There are a couple incidents or locations, if you can go to the slide where it has the route for the
The other.
The other one.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's it, but there's one location that, you know, always causes concern, and that's coming through Heritage Hill. When the bikes come through Heritage Hill and they're going out onto Highland Road, we have two detail officers that are there. Traffic gets backed up to the point where we have to let the cars go, because traffic's now backed up on 18. We tell the bicycles to stop, and some of them obey, some of them don't obey, and they'll go down Highland Road, the wrong side of the road. I understand they're trying to, you know, get a qualifying time or something like that, but, you know, if something can be addressed with that, I know it's been good about addressing the bicycles who want, you know, pulling over to the right, because bicycles have to pull to the right to let a passing vehicle pass. That's always been an issue, I know you've
And that's been eliminated?
And that's been eliminated, and you've told people that they're gonna be disqualified, and there's probably a couple of the issues that could be addressed with a disqualifier as well. And that, one of them is obeying police officers, not riding on the wrong side of the road.
One other, I think, advantage of the 2020 Patriot Bike Course is there's really only one left in Lakeville. So, whenever, of course, cycles are turning left, they have to cross traffic, so that obviously, that's where we always have a police detail. So, you know, one advantage of this course is the only left is the left on Long Point Road.
Alright.
Any questions?
I don't have any, John, do you have any questions?
No, I think that whatever issues there were, whether it be from noise issues in the morning to police details, more police details, you've always been willing to change the course and work with Sean Joyce and his crew of the, of the day. And aside from the bike riders riding multiple people across, I'm okay with the rest, and I know that you have talked and talked, and you'll be disqualifying them if they continue that. They'll just ruin it for the other 800 people, and that's unfortunate. So, you've addressed all the issues that we've brought up, all the way from whether it be rubbish or noise to the route. So, I think it's, you've addressed it every year, anyone's concerns. Certainly, Sean and his crew and the chief are always on top of the days.
Yeah, I have a question, a couple of questions, actually. How many participants are there in your own set, chief, thank you?
Thank you, chief.
How many participants, according to your website, do you want, the Patriot Half has been sold out? And how many participants are in that?
Well, we will end up with about 700 on race day, because there's sort of this attrition of people that have
Okay, how many participants in the Cranberry Tri-Fest?
Each day will average about 500.
So, it's 1,000 altogether? So, my question is, and I brought this up to be before, Mark, that this is not a nonprofit organization, this is a profit business. And I know the Park Commission is concerned about the, last year I think Sky did get $8,000, somewhere in that area. $8,000, somewhere in that area.
Just over $500.
So I assume that you're going to charge the same amount for the venue fee this year?
We'll be adjusting that because he won't be able to use the building for one day.
Okay. So what is that going to be?
Probably down a couple hundred dollars.
Okay, so, all right. So the one, the Tri-Fest one here, there's a participation fee, and how much is that participation fee?
So we have, it really ranges from $40 up to, you know, if you sign up at the very last minute for the longest distance race, to $145. So there's a question.
No, but how much should, how much did the town get here, the Park Commission get for the participation fee?
Oh, it's $5.
So $5. And when was that put into effect?
That's been in effect six or seven years.
Six, seven years? Okay. All right. So the other one there, the Patriot Half, I believe, if I'm correct, if I'm wrong, that you donated $500 to the Lakeville Library this past, last year.
I, yes, well, I gave 500, that was then divided between the...
No, it was $500 to the Lakeville Historical Society this year.
All right, whatever it was.
The previous year, it was split between the Friends of the Library and the Friends of the Senior Center.
Okay, so in your presentation, you said that $34,000 were generated for these entities, for the Cathedral Camp and Temple Land Camp?
Well, again, that's 34,000, the volunteer groups, the donations, and then the fees paid to the, those Cathedral Camp and Temple Land, so that 6,000 is in part of that $35.
But the volunteer group is completely separate, because they have to participate enough to get a donation, right?
Right. I mean, separate, yes, they get a separate donation. I write them each...
So how much of that money is volunteers groups?
I mean, it varies, you know, it's several thousand dollars, you know. Probably across, between the two events, I don't know, maybe $10,000.
Okay, so let's say it's $24,000, and 8,000 of it's going to us. You know, I have a problem with the amount of money here that's being generated, that, you know, you've got $700, 700 participants for the Patriot Half, and based upon looking at the numbers that are charged for that, it's a significant amount of money. How much do you charge for the Patriot Half?
Again, it varies from, anywhere from $225 up to about $290.
Okay, so if it's, let's say it's 200. That's $140,000 that's generated, you know, for that one alone. And I don't know how much revenue was generated for the Cranberry Tri-Fest.
I mean, what I'll say is, yes, again, I'm a for-profit business. The numbers we get for this event haven't always been that case. It's been around for 12 years, it's taken a long time to build up to this point. I, as I said, I, you know, I try to give back where I can. I'm still trying to, you know, support a family. I, my, you know, wife wasn't working for a few years. I mean, like, you know, I understand what you're saying, but I'm trying to run a business, and not all of my events, you know, do as well. So yes, this is certainly one of my better events financially. And I, like I said, I give back where I can.
Well, guess what? We're running the business here too.
Okay.
You know, and I think, and I'm not speaking for the Park Commission, but, you know, I would think that the amount of participants here, and talking about the Patriot Half, I think that you, we ought to be getting more for the town. You know, that $5,000 for the participants, I think, is pretty little compared to, we're not even getting 5% of the participants, what it costs to run in these races. So that's my opinion, I don't know about the Park Commission, but I have a problem with this, that, you know, we're making a lot of money on us, and we're not getting what we should be getting, and that's just me. So I'll decide what you want to do.
So I'm going to stay with safety, because that's what I dealt with last year, with the Jim Hutt thing. And, you know, to hear our police chief stand here and say, you know, we really get a little upset when the bicyclists don't obey the police, you know, again, I don't know that that's a reason for me to say I don't want the race anymore, but it's certainly a safety concern. So again, I know when John and I had met with you over the summer, we wanted to stress, you know, none of the four and five across and whatever. And again, I don't know if you gave out any violations or fines. I know that people didn't notice that there was, you know, a couple of more road officials trying to enforce some things, so I guess that's a good thing. But, you know, like, from the time this started, we have more houses in Lakeville, we have more cars in Lakeville, we have more people in Lakeville, so it's impacting more people. But, you know, I do know that you're, you know, really cooperative. Again, going back to the Triple E thing that we discussed, we called you and said, hey, you know, you can't be there too early because the night mosquitoes are still out. I would hope going forward you would still have that sort of teamwork attitude. And while, it'd be nice to see more organizations, you know, getting some money, I respect that you're trying to run a business. But I do know that, you know, like I talked to our highway guy, and he's like, oh, I try to make sure the sander goes out, you know, to make sure there's no sand, so that the town, you know, has done absolutely everything we can, so...
The town's been great.
Right. I mean, some towns actually have like a usage fee, which we don't. I can't say now that we know about, maybe we'll do that, but, you know, I don't think that's fair to you, to do that now. So going forward, again, you know, could be different when we're here next year talking about it.
Well, I mean, I'll commit to a larger donation to the town of Lakeville for the Patriot Half that comes through town. If I could, I'd love to have it go to the Parks Commission, since they've been great to work with. I mean, typically, I kind of just, you know, say, Tracy, you know, what do you think over the selectmen thing?
Yeah.
You know, the fact that it's supporting outdoor and being active is certainly consistent with, you know...
Yeah, and people, you know, people have called me and they said, I love to see it, it inspires me, you know, to keep going, when I gave up on my New Year's resolution. So I mean, I do think there is some good community stuff, but honestly, I live on one of those streets, and it's not always easy. So if we're asking, you know, our residents to, you know, be very patient and cooperative and whatever, you know, I just want your folks to be doing as much, you know?
Absolutely. And I will always welcome suggestions for what to do, you know, like at the last selectman meeting, I brought in some of the signs I had made up to help promote that, you know, we're going to obviously stick with that. And it's, unfortunately, it's hard to quantify if, how much it's getting. I do, anecdotally, I can tell people, give me feedback, that they're hearing it, and, you know, oh, I was telling the person to stay left, and, you know, someone came up to me and was saying, oh, you know, part, where it's hard is when you're going up a hill, you're trying to get around someone, it's hard to just go right by them, you know, so...
Right.
So I feel like the message is getting out there, but I understand there's, you know, you'll still see some...
You know, we can make suggestions about what we would like to see, but we can't actually tell you how to run your business, so we can only evaluate that after the fact. So I, the other thing that's encouraging for me is this report that, you know, is generated with, you know, I know there's one thing on there that was a little concerning, which I had known about before, but, you know, mostly for me, as long as we don't have too many interactions with cars and bicyclists, or cars and riders, then, you know, only because I, my kids are still in their early twenties, so I remember them getting their licenses and having to drive down the street with all the bicyclists. So, you know, I just, just really want to stress, you know...
Safety is a huge concern. I mean, I feel very large responsibility putting these events on, putting a lot of people out there on bikes, and yeah, we've had incidents, and the law of averages, you know, for 19 years of putting on the race, things are going to happen.
Yeah.
Things happen, though, of course, if you go out for a recreational ride, you know, just a few friends, so...
Sure, yeah, yeah.
And that's why, like I said, I will always welcome, I know you can't tell me how, but, you know, ideas, thoughts from the police, fire, whomever, you know, I'm not, I don't pretend to be the smartest guy in the room.
Okay. Okay, so...
I just got one other thing.
Yeah.
Does the Park Commission think that the participant fee ought to stay the same?
At our last meeting, the meeting before, we instituted a participant fee increase of 33%, which will take effect next year.
That's across the board.
Across the board for all players, all participants. We've just, I mean, we're losing the revenue from the haunted house and costs, we just had to increase it as much as we don't want, but...
But that really doesn't apply to this event.
Well, it will, because for 2021, his participant fee will go from $5.
Yeah, I think you, it's quite different from this versus a child that's participating in, you know, softball or baseball or whatever. I don't think it's apples to apples here, in my opinion. You know, if you're increasing it 33%, you know, I feel bad for the families.
So do I.
Okay, but this is, you're not comparing one thing against the other here. This isn't apples to apples here. This is not like, the Lakeville Softball's got $5,000 to run their program, and you're increasing it by 33%. In this particular take, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars here.
It would be an increase based on these numbers of $1,700.
Okay, so I'm just, I'm just asking, you know, because I don't think it's fair. I really don't, I'm sorry.
Well, what do you think would be fair?
Well, I think you ought to at least double it. At least double it. So we get something back, because, I mean, there's, you know, we're talking a thousand participants on our properties, on our facilities, okay? Concerned about public safety, concerned about liability, and all those things associated with it. And for $5,000 participants, I think it's nothing compared to what he's generating here already. That doesn't include...
That wouldn't feel like nothing to me, and, you know, that's not my decision, I realize that, but I just...
No, but it doesn't include your sponsors too, you're a living stage of sponsors.
Very little sponsorship money in the events I run. And one of those things I always think I should do a better job of, but, but look, I, I'm just being honest with you, I, you know, I would feel that, but, you know, that, I guess, doesn't matter, right?
Well, it does matter. It matters to everybody involved here. It's not just you, it's not about you, it's about the town as well, and the Park Commission. You know, they're doing their best to keep that place, that facility, you know, up to date as best as possible, and they're struggling too, right, Scott?
Yes, we do.
You know, but we're struggling too.
I didn't mean that it doesn't matter to everyone, I'm just saying that, I guess I feel the town will do what the town thinks is, needs to do. And then I have, then I'm in a decision to say, okay, you know, okay, then that's, that is the new fee. And if it got to a point where, oh, I, you know, I can no longer do this, or I increase prices, like, you know, then it's business, I understand that. And I will, you know, just, there's not any kind of veiled threat or anything, I'm just trying to say, I understand, I understand what you're saying, and I will, you know, abide and work with the town to the best of my abilities.
Well, it's up to the Park Commission to decide what they want to do. So if they want to leave it the way it is, that's up to them.
Okay.
You got a question back there?
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Can you come up to the podium, please? I can't even see you.
I'm Marcel, wife, Mel Walter.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, how are you doing? I just want to say, you know, I came to support him today, but I think there just might be a little misunderstanding that he's not quite explaining his, the cost of putting on a race. So when you look at what people are charged, that's not what he's taking home. Believe me, race directors are not wealthy people. I mean, we've, you know, since he decided to do this whole time, it's a struggle. We have four kids, I'm just saying that the cost of, you know, police details, obviously very necessary, porta-potties, t-shirts, all the stuff that we do, our staff, he has staff he pays, on top of like the volunteer groups. I mean, it's, the costs of putting on this event are enormous. And I just don't, I just wanted to say that because I don't think that was mentioned, or there's an appreciation when you look at that number of what people pay, you have just no idea the, all the pieces that go into it. The thousands he spends at Costco to supply food and water, and all of the things, and his sponsorships over the years has dwindled to the point that they give him some product, and that's about it. We don't get a lot of money from sponsors. We promote them on the website, say, hey, look, so they'll keep giving product, but, you know, it's a, we just don't give you thousands of dollars anymore sponsorship, it just doesn't happen. I wish it did, you know, and if he had more time, maybe he could try to get that, but I'm just, you know, I just wanted to put that perspective in there, because we're not wealthy people, living a high life, you know, like, just to go out to dinner is a big deal. So, and we do have four kids, one of our daughters is disabled from an accident four years ago, so I couldn't work two years. I'm sorry, I didn't know what you meant.
I think, I think we get it, I think we understand.
I just wanted to give you that impression that we're a family, we're a human, and we're not wealthy.
Okay. All right, thank you. So unless there's any questions...
I just want to ask, Scott, so you're going to leave it the way it is, is that what you want to do?
Well, it would be pretty unfair, he's already established a price for this year, you know, to tell them that the price is going to go up.
But it hasn't gone up.
I'll buy, buy what that...
It hasn't gone up in years.
I don't know if that needs to be decided here tonight, none of our fees have.
No, specific to this, please. His fees have gone up, okay, our fees have not. Right? Our fees have not gone up for seven years?
The participant fee has not changed. Per participant, $5 fee has been in, enforced since I've been on the board, so that's at least five years.
Okay.
We now collect, he does a dinner, and we get a catering fee.
I get that, yeah.
Which we never got before. The bar, I don't believe the bar, the bar's relatively new, right? That's just the last couple of years. That's additional fee. And the venue fee has gone up over, it used to be, I think, 600, it's gone up a little bit.
Well, I'll also say, we, we used to actually have more people coming to the race, and we pulled out the records of that, that's also the case. But I'll say right now, if the park, and whether or not, I don't know if it needs to be decided tonight, but if the park decides, you know what, given this discussion, we feel, Mark, we need to adjust it, I will, I want to work with the town, okay? I don't want this to be acrimonious in any way.
Okay.
Yeah, I just have a quick...
Yeah, go ahead.
Couple of quick questions. One, and I'm not after the money, I just need a dollar number. On the Patriot Half, you said you'd increase it from 500 to something, just throw out a number.
Increase what?
On the Patriot Half Triathlon, you donate 500 a year.
To, to Lakeville.
What would you increase that to?
1,500.
Okay. And I would like that money to go, we've always picked it, and we picked some obscure, the Lakeville Historical Society last year, because that's kind of where I wanted to go. But the high school decker is a fabulous program, and not that the school doesn't have a budget, but I certainly wouldn't mind that money going to there. And whatever fee the park feels is appropriate, between you and Mark negotiating it, whether you go up some this year, whether you don't go up some, if you're going up 1,700 in a year, I can live with that, but if you want to split the difference, that's between you and him, I'm all right with that. So I was here more for the safety, that I wanted the program to continue from a safety aspect, and it's really only the bike riders that would somewhat ruin that. The rest has been, I think, pretty satisfactory to the town. And increasing the Patriot Half Triathlon by, from 500 to 1,500 is fine by me. And I don't know who picks that, whether we pick it at a later meeting, we can always do that. But you can see where some numbers of the board come from, from the money, so you and Mark can sort that out. I'm okay with whatever decision you make. So that's where I am.
Okay, so, does anyone, I would entertain a motion to approve, let's do it separately. First, the Tri-Fest to be held in Lakeville on August 15th and August 16th. Do I have a...
I'll second that, touch your motion.
All right, so I made that motion, so John seconded. Do we want to discuss it amongst ourselves? I, we, I know what your point is.
No, I have made my point.
Yeah, yeah, I know, no, I know.
I know the Park Commission is struggling, you know, to keep their budget together, and I just think that, you know, we have an opportunity to get more revenue here.
Yeah. And, you know, for me, honestly, it's, it's about the safety, because it goes right by my house, so I, you know, see people driving around, and there's curbs there and everything, so, okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the Tri-Fest, which is the one held from Lakeville to Lakeville on 8/15 and 8/16? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that one passes, and now the other one is for the Patriot, huh? I'll entertain a motion, make a motion.
Go on.
Okay, I will second. Any discussion on that particular...
No, he's agreeing to the fee.
Yeah, yeah, and I think the date you're going to clear with the gymnastics, are you still doing Pierce Ave? Yeah, yeah, and I think the date you're gonna clear with the gymnastics, are you still doing Pierce add?
We are not, we're Pierce, but I have, I spoke to them right after the event, and I already have this year, so it's, we're not conflicting.
Okay, so, all those in favor of approving the Patriot half triathlon, which goes through Lakeville but doesn't start and stop at Ted Williams, just for clarification? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. And, you know, I really do appreciate you bringing a lot of this stuff in because, you know, our board has changed. There's two new members, and, you know, we seeing stuff like this kind of helps when you're new to, you know, the game, so, so I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next thing is, meet with the Fire Chief O'Brien on a letter that he sent us regarding the actual police, fire, fire station.
So I'd like to thank you for allowing me to sit down before you so I can discuss this. I guess it would be proper for me to explain the motivation for the letter, or the background information. A little over a year ago, I, I was hired as the fire chief. And during the hiring process and, and my early days in the department, I was aware of, of the condition of the fire department, what kind of fire department building I would be working in. And, you know, it was, it was on my radar early. I'd been in the fire service for nearly twenty-eight years and worked in the fire marshal's office and had visited dozens and dozens of fire stations. So I had pretty good sample size to compare to. I guess what got on my radar, or what, I made some presumptions before I ever started in the Lakeville Fire Department. And my presumption was I would be privy to some, some plan, some coordination, some kind of, you know, essentially planning to address, address the building. Because to me, the, but the building in its, its current state was not serving the mission, or, you know, some people would describe as obsolete. And it, and it didn't suddenly happen. It was something that's probably been that way for, for a while. So you have a building that, you know, maybe doesn't fit the, the needs of the department perfectly, and there isn't a plan to address those needs. And then you have to balance that against the town's ability to pay, the, the public's willingness to pay, all these things. But I guess what I'm trying to achieve is the development of a plan. Because I know, you know, the public's the boss. And I know we are standing at a brand-new, expensive building, and they needed it, and they deserved it. But there might not be an appetite for another building right away. But in the absence of a plan, things go wrong. So I guess, you know, this, this, basically this list of deficiencies, it's, it's, what I'm trying to accomplish is, is development of a, a system, or maybe a body that can look at my facility, look at my building, and think about the options and begin planning on how to address some, some issues. Because, you know, we're not, we don't operate in silos. What happens to me affects other departments. Resources spent on my building is, is something that's taken away from another building, potentially. So maybe the answer is a, a building committee that can look at, you know, the town's big picture and, and see where the, where the needs and the resources should go, where the more pressing needs. I mean, speaking for the fire service, the, the, the fire department, the building itself is kind of the foundation for my entire operation. It's, in its current state, it's a, it's an obstacle to my recruitment. It's, you know, affects my operations, the, the apparatus, they, they have to be configured or positioned in the building in, in a way that they'll fit. It's kind of like a jigsaw puzzle. So it takes a little bit longer getting out of the building. There's, there's a lot of little things that, that affect me as far as obtaining the mission. You know, just things like, like health and safety, you know, where the washing, washing, where we're washing contaminated gear, things like that. These are all things that, like, if we were ever to, to be in a position to, to build a new fire station or renovate the current fire station, these are all issues that I hope or would have to be answered. Because if, if we didn't fix these problems and we spent money on, on a potential solution or, or, it'd be, it'd be money wasted. There's really, it's not about bells and whistles. I'm not about a grandiose plan. I'm really all about simple things. I like simple apparatus, simple trucks. And if I was ever given the opportunity to, to have a project to take care of these deficiencies, the solution would have to be simple, or I wouldn't be comfortable with it. And, and that's really what's motivating me to, to write that letter. You know, there's been people that have approached me, some discussion. People seem to want to talk about the condition of the fire station, and I assume it's because of this place opening, and it kind of got on their radar, and they want to compare my building to this building, or maybe my building to the whole police station. It's all beyond my, my control. I guess what I want to do is get ahead of, I don't want somebody speaking for the fire department or getting, I want to get out ahead of the message and making sure that, that really the, the critical needs of the fire department are taken care of. And I'm trying to build that foundation to make a plan, to have something in place should the town ever be in a position where they can fund a new, a new or renovated fire department. You know, you know, I understand the libraries, you know, they're, they're paying for the library or the, the senior center. These are things that, you know, are currently paying for, but, but surely those come off our, our debt service. So I want to have something in position, in, in, in the works and have some kind of coordination among, you know, basically the needs of the town, not just the fire department.
Okay. Anyone? Did you take a look at?
Sure. The, I guess if I read the chief's November eighteenth memo, the goal of this letter is not to advocate for a new facility or renovation project, but the last few minutes has been, let's form a building committee. So I think you are advocating for a new facility, but aside from that, I had asked you a while ago to, the, the advocate for our buildings has been our building commissioner, Nate Darlin. I asked you several months ago to come up with four critical items and get together with him and try to come up with a plan. Did you, did you do that?
I have identified four critical items, but I don't have...
Did you get together with them?
Uh, we discussed it today. We discussed it previously.
So you discussed it today because the meeting's tied?
Yeah.
So we have monies available. And I voiced that to you, that whether it be free cash, whether it be repair and maintenance, we have a reasonable amount of money, though we'd have to vote to increase the repair and maintenance, which we've done over the last few years through Nate Darlin, of increasing kind of a non-existing amount to fifty thousand to a hundred thousand. And I would be a proponent of certainly doing that and earmarking an amount of money, whether it be a hundred thousand, whether it be two hundred thousand dollars, that you and he, when I say you and he, you and he, with perhaps a designated from the selectmen, Maureen Candido, whoever she would like involved in that, and start to whack away at some of these. Some of these can be done without a new building. Some can't be done without a new building. But to do nothing, the list continues as it is and becomes frustrating. So I say, I suggest that you work through this list with an action plan. This isn't an action plan that's going to be resolved in the next twelve months. Some of this can be resolved by even the firefighters. And certainly between you and Nate and other support people can have a great improvement on the fire department list, if I call it.
Yeah.
Some, as I said, some are easier, some can be done by firefighters. We have in-house carpenters, electricians, painters, those types of things we can do, whether it's funding lockers. It's, you can't deal with a hundred items. You have to prioritize some of these, and some of these that get prioritized by you, Nate might say, can't be done. We did the same thing with Assawamson, that some people wanted to spend as much as thirteen million. Nate spent probably eight hundred thousand dollars. The building is, in his mind, not shared by everyone perhaps, but in his mind, is better than any of the other four schools, the three schools of the campus plus Assawamson, that he believes that's in the best shape of all of them. So I once again suggest that you and Nate and Maureen, if the selectmen want to be involved, obviously from a funding point of view, to me, we can release a fair amount of repair and maintenance to whack away at these. And every year, you whack away at maybe a hundred thousand dollars worth of that kind of...
And to be clear, it's, Nate, Nate has been huge, huge help to me. From the beginning, when we've had discussions about all kinds of problems, whether it's facility or otherwise, Nate's been a source of, of good information, and he's been, he's been very helpful to me all along. So, you know, it, it's not, I guess it's not a maintenance issue. Whenever there's things, like, we had a, a new leak today, and Nate's right over there, and he's, he's trying to track down the source of the leak, and he's, he's gonna jump, you know, he'll, he'll jump on it as fast as he can. It's, so I've had discussions with him all along. I guess having, you know, a discussion specific to, to what I was gonna say tonight, I wanted to make sure Nate was in the loop with it and make sure that he was comfortable with, with, with what I was putting forward. So that was kind of...
Right. So I certainly support fixing a lot of these. Do I support fixing them all? Perhaps not. But let's whack away at the ones that we can do.
I guess, I guess in my head, as I'm trying to do like a cost benefit, is it, at the end of the day, is it gonna be more cost-effective to, I mean, is it, does it make sense to spend sixty thousand dollars if I, if I, you know, I, I know in my head that health and safety is a, a priority as far as keeping contaminated gear out of living quarters, things like that. Having, having, I think a priority would be to have, of stalls that would be able to accommodate more in fire, fire apparatus, where I wouldn't have to fold the mirrors and to, to get the, the truck in the building. You know, I, I think shared facilities, I mean, I have females on the job, so, you know, I have this issue where if somebody wanted to be difficult, they could be, make problems for me as far as not having separate facilities. Things like that are, are probably priority items in, in any kind of a project to, to address the, the problems of the fire department. So I guess when you consider those things, then, then you ultimately, it comes down to analyzing whether or not, you know, we're spending, I guess, the money properly to, to address those things. That's what I'm concerned about.
Let me say this. If I looked at the Boston oldest fire station, which I think is at the beginning of Boylston Street and, and Mass Ave, still in existence. They love it. They, they did a big newscast on it two weeks ago. So the age of the building is not a concern among them. Whether we end up doing a, a single or a double outside stall, outbuilding or whatever, those things can be done. But some are much more difficult than others.
Yeah.
So let's get cracking on the ones that we can do and identify the ones that have a big dollar number behind it. But I'm, I am not supporting, I, I guess I, I take your letter and say, well, that's pretty good. This letter is not an advocate for a new facility, but yet that's really what you want at the end of the day. I'm not supporting that in the near future. The town saddles a fair amount of debt. I'm not going there.
And I get that.
And it took us, I think the, the building committee, if you will, for the police station started, could have been a lot earlier, at least two thousand and seven. So it took a long time to get from there to here. And to, we, we can whack away at a lot of these.
And that's just what I'm advocating for.
I'd rather do that, the facilities of, of sleeping arrangements of, there's some things that can't be moved. I can't move the upstairs kitchen. Like, I'm, I'm not gonna necessarily drill a hole in the floor and start to wash the vehicles inside, you know. I'm not gonna take all these items and discuss them tonight. A lot of these can be fixed fairly simply. Simply meaning not a lot of money. We have people. If I look at the bathroom, and that's the way the bathroom looks at, then shame on anyone to have not corrected that through the years. That doesn't need capital money. That needs someone in there getting working on fixing the walls and doing paint. Does that put an addition on the building for five thousand square feet to come up with multiple showers and stuff? No, but my God, if that's the picture of it, that should be fixed in the next month. So that's my suggestion. And I would not support a, a significant expenditure on building a new facility in the near future.
I understand.
I would not, I would not support that. The townspeople might support that.
I guess I would welcome an opportunity to discuss things like the limited amount of space and maybe the operations and how to better, better configure, how we use the space. Like, I, that's kind of, that's, I'd like to get the, the ball rolling and to get people, like you just said, sit down and discuss the issues.
Get the ball rolling.
Yeah.
You know, we, we have a, we have a boat in there, we have a hovercraft, we have a, it's winter, we have the push breaker in there. We might say, well, we need it for winches, but there are other solutions for that. So some of it can be moving equipment to buildings that aren't very expensive. But there's, there can be a plan for this, and it can be a reasonable plan.
And that's what...
That you can live with. But I look at it, you know, would it hurt to put the ladder truck in a different building? Maybe not. How often does it go to fires? It's gotta be heated, it's gotta be ready to go, you know, that type of thing. But obviously the apparatus, you have three apparatus and two ambulances that you use all the time. So I, I say work with, I'm throwing names around, work with Maureen and Nate and the, and the appropriate staff and get going.
All right.
But that's my suggestion.
And that's why I'm here.
It's my, only my suggestion. That's where I was before.
I guess I partly agree with John that, you know, we ought to address the immediate, you know, problems, whether it's maintenance or whatever, and some of the things that you pointed out. But I do, I do feel that there's definitely a space problem in shape, you know, that needs to be addressed in either that short term or it's long term. When I was a selectman, back when I left in two thousand and six, there was a feasibility study that was done for a public safety building. I don't know whatever happened to that. Maybe Maureen can try to find it, you know, to look at that. I mean, I know what, at that time, they were talking about a public safety building for police and fire, and then, you know, separated and so forth. But, you know, one of the problems, you know, here is, is that, you know, we can't put everything on Nate either. You know, if you're gonna hire somebody to, you know, an engineer or whatever, then you need to go to town meeting to, to do that, or a building committee and so forth. But I think this is a long-term thing, you know, by the time, you know, you get the thing moving and get it approved and do any designs and so forth and so on, potentially, you're talking four or five years out, you know, by the time you get to that point. So there may be something that we do in the short term to addressing some of the short-term problems, like John points out. And maybe there's an in-between alternative, because not only is there a space problem in the fire station, but the space problems in the town hall, you know, as well, that need to be addressed and need to be discussed and what those alternatives are. So, you know, I, if nobody else wants to do it, I'd gladly sit down with Maureen and Nate and you and discuss some options, if, if that's what the board wants to do, or you want to do it, John, that's fine too. It's up to you.
I'm out.
You want to do it? Okay, that's fine.
So, now I feel kind of the same way as both people on either side of me. Just to call out the obvious, we, we couldn't even just get a road bond passed for four million dollars, and it was a, you know, it was part of the work that the state was gonna do. That was our share, and we couldn't, we didn't even get a four million dollar road bond passed, and people complained about the streets all the time, so. I think when, if and when it goes before the people, I, you know, I, what happened with the police station was that was almost like a twenty-something-year process where people, three or more and more people would learn about, you know, that we needed a new building. The building itself just, you know. I think there can be improvements to this fire station building. I just hate for us to say, okay, let's build a new fire station and then take it to a vote, and people are like, we just voted an eight million dollar, you know. So, and that's my sense. My sense is, we've spent a lot of money. We spent a lot of money last year for this year in capital projects. We signed the eight million dollar... year in capital projects, we signed the eight million dollar bond for the police station. So, I, I just, that's an awful lot of debt exclusions and everything, but I, I would wholeheartedly agree that something needs to be done, as far as evaluation, on a consistent basis, not just say, oh, let's just evaluate it, and then we're looking for a feasibility study that was done however many years later. So, if step one is for you to create a committee, or your own group, you, one of the selectmen, the town administrator, the building inspector, and highlight exactly what, what can be and can't be, that's probably the direction that I'd like to go also, because I, I just have a hard time yelling, no, let's build something new now. And, I mean...
No, I wanna build, if we build something I would wanna build, right? If we renovate something, I wanna renovate it, right?
Yeah.
And right means, to me, that we address our deficiencies, so we don't waste money. And I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna beat up anybody, I didn't wanna hash up old mistakes or things like that, I just, I wanna start the process to correct. Not the building, my, my mission capability, that's what I need to correct. And, so, that's where I'm at.
Okay. So, do we make a committee, or can you just all work together?
Just work together and come up with a plan.
Yeah.
So, we might wanna take up, Nate and I have actually had conversations before about creating a permanent building committee, where any type of issues and deficiencies in any of the buildings that we have, we look at holistically, where we're looking at the whole town, and that we're kind of going over, all right, what's the useful life cycle of the library roof? You know, when, when is that gonna come into play, or, you know, what, what type of things are going on there? And then maybe plot out a timeline of things that may be able to happen in futures past, in futures, you know, depending on...
Yeah.
...financial availability, and the public's taste for it. Again, you guys are all spot on for what I've seen, and talk to people about as far as where the public is for any new spending. So, we do wanna, we wanna create a safe environment, and a comfortable environment for firefighters. And we do have space concerns that we, we can't address because of the way, because of the, the building is owned by Taunton, and we have certain restrictions on that. But, we, there are other options available to us, and we should explore them, even just to know what they are, as opposed to be able to act on them.
I mean, I do think that creating some sort of a committee to evaluate all the buildings on a continual basis is probably something that we should consider. It would also, I think, lighten up the load that Nate Darling himself has.
Yes, yes. Agreed.
And, but, I, I don't know that I'm ready right now to form that committee. I almost just wanna, you know, let you guys run with this, and if you get back to us and you say, listen, this is a bigger project than we thought, or it's gonna cost more money than we thought, and, you know, I'd like to see you guys have a shot at it first. So...
Can we get back to you with who should, so we can really think on, maybe who should be part of it? Because I, I know because of all the technology needs, I was thinking IT should be involved also.
Well, we, we have, I think you should look at the list. I, I think the list can overwhelm you, that you start talking about IT in an old building. But, certainly, it needs to be addressed. But, the physicality of the building, and how can we make it more livable and safer, we certainly wanna do that, for sure.
Yeah. And I, I think that, you know, John, Maureen, Nate, and Mike will be able to get, you know, some decent work done, and then we can, you know, think about that, sort of something that like Nate is referring to.
Yeah.
I don't know that I'm prepared to do that right now either, but I, I know that that's a good idea, I discussed that with him too, and I see that it would take a lot of responsibility off of his plate. So, 'cause he does, I don't think people realize how much he does, you know, he's doing grants all the time, he's trying to find money all the time, he's trying to work on everything he can, so maybe that would be a, you know...
Do you have a time that you'd like us to report back to?
No.
I don't really have a time.
No. This, this has been here for as long as I can remember, with the police being downstairs in the cell where we keep our records now. I think we need to come up with an action plan, whether that takes three months or four months, a lot of these, we can whack, whack away at fairly soon. Some are weather related.
Right.
I don't wanna go paint things that are gonna be a problem because of the temperature and things. So, I think we just need to come back in a, in a quarter and see what we're doing.
Yeah.
And go from there. When I throw Nate's name out, it's only, I don't care if Nate hired, when I say hired someone, whether he got an assistant, not an assistant, in that sense, to say, you know, let's spend ten thousand dollars. Nate can't do everything. So, when I say Nate, it's really under his purview.
Purview, right.
How he does it, that's, he can figure that out better than I can, so...
Yeah. I mean, as far as like establishing a formal committee that would be appointed to monitor all the buildings in town, I mean, I think maybe we talk about that, maybe again in May, appointments would be coming up in July again. I don't think it needs to be any earlier than that. If we decide at that time that, you know, that's a good move, then we're right on track with the calendar to make that committee. But, I'd like to just see, you know, what the four of you can come up with on this actual thing, but...
And the only reason I brought that up is 'cause I don't wanna be that guy that's burning bridges with, with the other department heads. It's, you know, it's give and take, and there's only, there's a limited amount of resources to, to draw from, and so, but if it's not my turn, I wanna, but I wanna be there when it is my turn, be ready.
But, I, I don't think that there's small resources, and that we've attacked the Asawamton School, we attacked the, whether it be the windows in the building of, of the town hall years ago to a restructuring and, and things like that. So, the fire department, in my mind, was the next thing to, to be dealing with from a financial perspective. And I need to make sure, we need to make sure, that the repair and maintenance count is very significant, because I call it demolition by neglect. Let this continue with no corrective action, and it's always like, oh, it's gone so far, now we have to tear it down.
Right.
And we don't, you don't need to do that. You don't tear your house down when it's forty years old. You sell it, maybe, and get a new one, but something else has to fix it.
Yeah.
Anyways, let's get cracking on what can be done and what can't be done.
All right?
All right.
I mean, I do appreciate this as information, because at least we have like a good baseline, and we can say, you know, we tried this, we tried that, whatever. So, I, I do appreciate that you brought it forward.
No, I don't wanna, like, I don't wanna surprise you with anything, I don't wanna, you, you know, I think, you've been in the fire station, you've looked around, but I, until you put it in writing, until I communicate with you, it's...
Yep. Okay. Anything else?
No.
Hi.
So...
Thank you for your time.
All right. Nate's, Nate, oh, chief, sorry. Seven o'clock, so now we're definitely tardy, seven thirty. Meet with Jamie Bissonnet to discuss Taunton water application for property located at Five Harding Street. I see you hiding behind the podium, Jamie.
Good evening.
So, at the last meeting, we tabled this, because all we had was just the application page, and that's it, so...
Sure, and I apologize.
Yeah, that's all right. I mean, it's just, you know, we're trying to do the right things here too. I'm new, barely still new, and Rich is new to the board, so John was out, so if you can just give us an update, that would be great.
Not a problem at all. So, first, we had two applications in front of the board. We've withdrawn the three residential configuration up in the back, and the reason for that is just merely getting it there. I don't think it's cost effective. I did draw out the plans and showed the applicant, the owner, and I think just running the line out that far made no sense. So, they're gonna go with wells on that part of it. But, this part here, you can see the highlighted route, we're looking to put an eight-inch line and tie into the Taunton main, which is on the other side of the street. We need it for fire suppression and domestic water. An eight inch should be suitable. We're gonna put a hydrant in the front, right next to the stand, well, probably about fifty feet away from the stand pipe, which you can have a hundred foot maximum per fire code. And that, we're asking for about three thousand gallons maximum a day, not counting if there's a fire, obviously. Septic system is designed for a little over twenty-eight hundred gallons a day, so three thousand gallons per peak flow, I think, is suitable. And that's about it.
Okay.
Okay, I just have a, I have a question, and I know that you're referring to the, the assessors' maps. Jamie?
Yeah.
Dad? The, that's okay. The, the planning board, you know, has approved, I think it's lot one or lot two?
That's correct.
Correct?
Yep.
So, if this, this is the layout, and, and really, the water line is not gonna be installed at thirty-nine Cross Street?
That's correct. We're looking for just what would've been more the Five Harding Street component.
Okay, so, we need to adjust the applicant?
We had sent in a, a letter requesting a withdrawal of that application.
But, it still refers to thirty-nine Cross Street.
Oh, and the reason being is, it, the parcel itself, we had changed with the Form A plan, and so the actual address and the maps haven't been updated...
Right.
...in the system. So, we put that just as clarification, but...
So, right now, we're gonna use the assessors' maps, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Then, it would only be on lot number nine, and not lot number eight?
There might be a small triangle of lot number eight, but yes.
No, no, I understand, I was talking about the water line.
Oh, the water line, no, completely on number nine. You're a hundred percent correct.
Okay, so, if we change that to lot number nine, we're okay, right?
That's fine with me, yep.
So, can you see what I did, John?
Yeah, but I, I don't understand our concern about the water lines, because this has already been addressed through the, the planning board, the fire department, the building commission. So, I guess I'm a little perplexed while we're, while we're back here. We, we do the water allocation, if you will.
Right, but what I'm saying is, the water allocation does not go on lot eight, it only goes on lot nine. Because lot nine, lot eight, today, under the assessors' map, is thirty-nine Cross Street. This water line is going at Five Harding Street.
Right, right.
So, that's all I'm saying.
No, I know that, right.
Yeah, we're perfect.
I've been to his meetings.
Yep, no, I appreciate that.
I'm just trying to get it straight, that's all. So, I'll make a motion to approve the water allocation for three thousand gallons a day for, you wanna use the current block?
Either that or the Five Harding Street address.
Five Harding Street, okay. For three thousand gallons a day for commercial use only.
Any other discussion? No? No? All of them paid?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jamie, sorry I had to wait so long.
All right. So, now Jose isn't here, he was next on our agenda. Does anyone, do we have, are we just tabling him, or are we...
We can table him, or we can... I think he just wanted to present his ideas for the select one. He can present that to me, he doesn't need to...
Okay, okay. So, then, we're just gonna sort of table that one. All right, number nine, which is the FY twenty-one budgets. Deciding was asked to be placed on each upcoming year.
Oh, well, yeah, but I guess you're going through the workshops and everything.
Okay, I'm like, someone, I've got my budget, but...
Are you talking about the budget we just got?
No, I didn't know if someone was, had questions, or, yeah...
Are you talking about twenties budgets or twenty-ones?
It says twenty-one on there, so...
Yeah.
Twenty-one, okay, okay.
Okay, so, I think we're all...
I updated in my...
Okay.
Look, we're done with that item.
All right, yay, yay, okay. So, number twelve, review revised earth removal regulations. So, I think this was something that was on the back burner for a while. So, it was, it was determined that most of the bylaw needs to be rewritten, instead of like going off the old copy and making changes. It's almost like the attorneys felt they had to just rewrite the whole, so...
So, I guess we have to refer to John, because neither one of us are here, but looks like this was back in 2017, John?
Right, I think we're wasting money. There's, there's two to three earth removal permits per year, of which the only thing that moves around the town generally is Terry Edwards taking stuff out. I don't care if we rewrite it or don't rewrite it. It's kinda like doing a bylaw for the same two people. I think Cristalini and T.L. Edwards are the only two people that traditionally ask for an earth removal permit. So, I don't even know why it's on here. So, I didn't put it, we can do whatever you want. You want, he, he already rewrote it, I don't care if we rewrite it or not. It's like doing a bylaw for no customers.
It's, I think, I think we've had it, oh, it's just sitting out there, because...
We've had it sitting out there, that's for sure.
Yeah, there was no real decision made about the fee structure, so I don't know if anyone wants to have a talk about whether we should be doing that. There's a two hundred dollar administrative fee that goes along with that, so it's just trying to clean up some loose ends, so we can just keep moving in a forward direction.
Right, so, but, Rich, what did you mean, John? I don't care if you redo it or don't redo it, there's no customers.
Well, the thing is that, you know, you said that there was only a couple of earth removal permits that have happened in the town, and they're repetitive ones. I hate to tell you this, John, but there was a hundred thousand yards taken out of LaBaron.
Right, which they came forward, and they gave us the check for...
But, they didn't get a permit.
They didn't have to, under the, under the zoning board. Well, the zoning board on, on the forty B can waive all those, but they came forward, because we brought it up, I brought it up, that they took it. So, they came with a fifteen thousand dollar check for the hundred thousand yards, so we knew that.
I understand that.
Yeah, we knew that.
But, this bylaw, you're supposed to have as-built plans and, and stuff like that, that's supposed to be before they start, and after they're done, and that's how you determine how much was taken out of there. And I did talk to the chairman of the Board of Appeals, and the Board of Appeals said this was not in our jurisdiction, so it wasn't even discussed at the meeting whether they needed a permit or not, and they did. And I'm, I'm happy that the, the company came forward.
Well, the company came forward because I brought it up, is one, is one reason. So, I, I understand that. So, we gave them such a check for fifteen thousand.
You're on the Board of Selectmen, this, this is a general bylaw, which...
Oh, rewrite it, I don't care.
This comes under the Board of Selectmen's jurisdiction.
Sure, why rewrite it? I'm, I'm fine with rewriting it.
All right, then, then, okay, that's fine, and I guess we'll put it on the next meeting, but the other question...
Well, he already read on it, right?
Um, yeah, but I haven't read the whole thing.
Well, I thought, I thought that's what you were discussing, is redline version.
Well, the redline is the old stuff. All the black is what's new, so there's significantly more new stuff in here. So...
Right, go leave it on there, I don't care.
So, why don't we...
Then, the other thing that needs to be discussed at the next meeting is what the fee is, fifteen cents per cubic yard, which has been like that for twenty-five years anyways, or more. So, that should be, what we should do is, maybe we can ask Tracy Maureen to, Maureen to...
We're gonna do that as part of our overall fees that we were talking about, to see if it lines up with, you know, some of our neighboring towns or towns that have similar demographic...
Yep. So, over, since 2017, I was working on this with town council, and we basically have several options. You can do a flat fee, a quarterly fee, or a per cubic yard fee, or no fee. I have gone out to all those surrounding communities, and I have examples of their fee structures, so, and it all, and it varies all over the place. So, I will have that for you, when, the next time we discuss it.
Well, I would suggest you give it to Maureen, and then...
Pass it on to me, and we'll put it as part of our spreadsheet.
I'll send it over, yeah. Well, this is the other people's fees. You want the other people's fees too?
That's what we're gathering. That's what we're gathering, kind of.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I've got a lot of it.
Okay, so, we're gonna table this and hopefully get a ton of information, and then we will actually make a decision about changing the fees, like with all the other ones that the office is doing investigations for. All right. Review and vote to approve annual liquor license renewals, so...
Okay, do we need to...
Do we need to read them all?
We need, we need to do that, but do we need to read the hours, Tracy?
I don't believe you need to read the hours. If we just read the type of license and the establishment, I think that would be fine.
They look all the same anyways. Okay, I will make a motion to renew the following liquor licenses from January first to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. Package store wine and malt. Golf Resources, Inc. Package store all alcohol. Ahad, Annie Sand Corporation, Lakeville Liquors and Market. BVP Inc., Inc., Muckeys Liquors. Terramac Wine and Spirits. Every Liquor's Liquor Market. Restaurant All Alcoholic. Hawaii Corp., Orchard of Hawaii, Pecoy Brook Golf Course, Pecoy Brook Club, Pub. Lakeville Golf Club, Lakeville Golf Club. LaBarren Operating LLC, LaBarren Hills Country Club. Back Nine LLC, The Back Nine Club. Bali's Pizza, Inc., Ken and L, Inc., Sega Sushi. Club All Alcohol, Lakeville Fraternal Orders of Eagles, number thirty-nine ninety-four. General On Premise Wine and Malt. Lakeville Virtual Entertainment Group. The Broken Tea Virtual Club. General All Purpose All Alcohol Beverages. The Bartending Service of New England LLC.
Okay, second. Any conversation about these licenses? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, the next one is review and vote to renew class one and class two annual licenses. And with this comes an attachment from the building inspector. That says, "I have inspected the properties listed on the attached memo. All locations seem to be in compliance with the conditions set for each individual license." All right. So, you wanna read them again, or?
Sure. Yes, John does.
John, do you wanna?
You guys are doing a good job. I already filed mine.
Copy that task.
We do and vote to class one, class two annual licenses. Eight of nine class two used car dealers, and all class one dealers have submitted their renewal for application from January first, two thousand and twenty, through January first, two thousand and twenty, twenty-one. So, class two license renewals, Salvatore...
Cucinati.
Cucinati, thank you. Auto, United Auto Services, Lakeville Auto Sales, Chrisolitieri, CE Enterprises, Leonardo Solano, Solana, Solano Auto Sales, Andrews Family Auto, Linder, Berry and Jason Berry, Elite Auto Sales, Dave Rose, Dave's Auto. License one renewals, Russo's Recreational Rentals, Route Forty-four Collision Center RVs and Boats, Bradford Trailer Sales.
Okay, second. Any talk, any conversation? All those in favor? Aye. So, number sixteen is review and vote to renew common victula licenses for the...
Do we do that?
Sorry. There we go, twenty-one. I didn't move it.
Madam Chair, I have one more item of new business that I neglected to bring up.
Yep.
Right before I left, Nate Darling asked me if I could speak to you. I'll just read his letter.
Okay.
"I would like to respectfully ask the Board of Selectmen to appoint Derek Macedo as temporary emergency board of health agent for the town of Lakeville. Mr. Macedo is currently on the Board of Health, currently the Board of Health Agent for Freetown, and he's willing to assist us outside of his normal work hours. Annual food inspections must be completed by year's end. In addition, Derek will assume, Derek will assure us that we actually meet this deadline. Mr. Macedo will be compensated at a rate of thirty-five dollars per hour, which is consistent with other part-time inspectors, agents within this department." We are kind of in a bind with the time of year that Kevin left, and so, even though you can take a vote and then have to ratify it at the next meeting, I can go through and start the process, so we can get him that help, so we can finish those inspections by the end of the year, if it's all right with the board.
Okay, so...
That's all moved.
Okay, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. There we go.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
On that motion, are we gonna put any sort of a term? Is it gonna be expired when a full-time health agent has been hired?
It just says temporary.
Well, I don't think it needs a term.
Yeah, it just says temporary, so there is no term listed as temporary, just until the inspections are completed. And we thank Mr. Derek Macedo for helping out.
We'll be.
Okay, so, that's it for new business. Anything else? Do you have any business? Tracy, any business? John, any new business? Okay, so, under old business, we have discussed advanced posting notices. I believe that goes back to us trying to give folks a little bit more leeway time. Right now, as it is, we, we post usually a little bit before forty-eight hours. I know it's tough for the clerk's office if we post everything early to be changing the agenda, which is a format, well, which we, is the law, we have to do that, so...
Madam Chair?
Yep.
The, the planning board and the Board of Appeals and the Conservation Commission, you know, put their whole thing out there for a year, and then they add the agenda.
After.
I don't know why we can't do that.
So, I'd like Lorraine to speak to this, because she's actually working on the calendar function in the website.
Okay.
One of the, we actually sat with the, the open space committee. I know the chair's here now, so, how do we get the information out to the public when a committee, board of commission, votes on future dates, meeting dates, without interrupting the flow of our town calendar, which we use for postings, for meeting postings? So, speaking to the town clerk, we came up with the, the solution that each of the webpages for each of the boards, committees, and commissions has a section called news and announcements. So if we were to go in there and say that future meetings scheduled would be on the news and announcements, we could list them out, that they could be at whatever time, location, but this is subject to change because things come up. The notice for those folks that subscribe to the news, for those boards, committees, and commissions, will get notification that there was something posted in the news and announcements. So that's one way that we're going to attempt to try to address that.
Madam Chair?
Oh, oh, sorry. And the second half of what she's doing, both Lilian, I'm sorry, the town clerk and, and the treasurer are putting out in their next mailings the link to go on our website again to sign up for these announcements. So it's going out in all the tax bills, and it's going out in all the census for this year to get more people to sign up.
Right. The only problem I have with that is that I'll look at the calendar. You know, and then it shows Board of Appeals, it shows whatever, you know, these meetings and so forth. Now you're asking me to go to each one of the areas to look up what it is?
No, you can subscribe to each of the boards, committees, and commissions, and as they put information out there, then you could check and maybe mark that down on your calendar as a tentative date, without having to go back. Once it gets posted, it becomes, you know, a final date, but it's really hard, because some of these meetings are fluid. Some of them are stationary.
I'm not asking to put the agenda out right away. All I'm asking to do is that the planning board meets the third Thursday of the month.
The second and fourth, right.
Whatever it is, I'm fine with that.
If this isn't suitable, we'll try to find, no, no, we'll try to find another way. We're trying to work within the confines of the calendar as it exists in our system.
But I see that the planning board has put out future dates as well. The Conservation has, the Board of Appeals always does.
This committee can, by all means, you can...
I'm just asking you, because I, I mean, I like to look at a calendar and say, here's the month of January, what's going on here?
Absolutely.
Then I'd watch for the agenda.
So if the board wants it that way...
I mean, I know when the meetings are, most of them. But I don't think that the public does.
Well, I know, for example, the, the school committee, after the election, you know, they vote their calendar of meetings, and they'll meet whatever, the first Wednesday of the, of every month. This committee could entertain something like that as well. We're, you know, we're trying right now to create some parameters around having that future meeting schedule for each board, committee, commission.
You know, the, the problem is, is that, you know, our next meeting is June, January thirteenth, correct?
December thirtieth.
Oh, sorry, December thirtieth, whatever. So that, that is not even on the calendar yet. So if you wanted to come in and talk to the board about something, you would not be able to know that till forty-eight hours before our meeting.
On the main calendar, correct.
Right? I think we'll look at it further, that's...
We can't, it's just, yeah, we are experiencing some issues that Tracy brought up the last time.
Yeah, I would prefer to do like the second and the fourth Monday of the month. I mean, the problem with a three-person board too is, is, you know, I want five-person boards, maybe they, they can agree at the beginning to miss, oh, I can't be here for that, but the rest of you will be there. You know, they're different...
They can be, they can be adjusted, and, you know, that happens. And sometimes they don't have a quorum at the meeting, I have to cancel the meeting, it is what it is. You know?
I don't think we've ever canceled a selectman meeting in a lot...
I'm just saying it's...
Nine years.
It happened.
Because of no quorum.
Yeah, we're just trying to be diligent and, and not overwhelm the town calendar, because people will go there for postings, and it can be overwhelming if things are changing on that all the time. Because you could look this morning, and you'd see the dates of, you know, what's gonna be for the rest of the month, but there could have been a meeting last night, and then it just gets changed tomorrow, and you might not check it tomorrow. So we're just trying to be a little more diligent and...
Further what Lorraine's saying, if we have a lot of things, it pushes it down also. I know there's been instances where people haven't seen something, because there's been four things on that date, and you can't see the meeting, because it's, you have to click on the square.
I was gonna say you have to open it up.
Yeah, 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 so, there are some, I'm gonna say some limitations on the, what we have, but we can keep working until we find something that works great.
Yes.
Madam Chair, could I, could I ask, Rich, are you only concerned with the selectmen getting out there, or everybody?
I'm, I'm concerned that everybody should be out there. We know that the planning board is meeting the second and the fourth Thursday of every month. We know the Board of Appeals is meeting...
The third one, the third Thursday.
Conservation is meeting, whatever. I mean, that should be easy to put out on the calendar. I know you don't necessarily have an agenda yet, but it, it can be out there. And then the school committee, Old Colonies, has got their whole month scheduled, you know, out there on our calendar.
Sure.
You know, so I don't know why we can't do that.
Well, I know that the open space committee, you know, they went to the end of the fiscal year with their dates.
I just wanna say, I, I thank you for all the people that are involved in getting the minutes up to date. That's a lot of progress, not only with the Board of Selectmen, but with other committees now are getting it out on the website, so they're available, thank you. So that's, we're not there yet, but we're getting there, so thank you very well.
So, I guess we're gonna keep on the drawing board on that one. See what else we can come up with. The only other thing under old business that we have posted is the reorganization stuff. I, the biggest change for me was that I couldn't make a couple of those regional FinCom meetings, and that's not fair. So Rich agreed to take that one on. But otherwise, does anyone have any questions on that? And after that, I think we're done.
I, I had the old business under your meeting notes of the twenty-fifth.
Oh, okay, yep.
If I can go to that.
Yep.
On the twenty-fifth, on the first page, the selectman Cameron said that the selectman decided to spend that money, meaning the overlay money, to balance the budget. Well, let me give you a little bit of history, because that isn't really what happened. So, if you went to the town overlay account, for the last, let me do it, one, two, three, four, five, six... For the last seven years, it has been overinflated by at least a hundred thousand dollars a year. So that the overlay account had exceeded eight hundred thousand dollars. And the selectmen, along with the Board of Assessors and the town accountant, decided not to add any more into the overlay district, overlay account, at least for the year two thousand and nineteen. We then did the same thing for the year two thousand and twenty. And what that allowed, and it's still over four hundred thousand dollars in the analogy, but what that allowed to happen was that we did several things. We paid down debt, we paid for capital, we put more money in OPEB, and we put more money in the roads. It was never used to balance the operational budget. It was only used to buy one-time line items, which of those items that I discussed, the capital, in fact, had gone to exceeding eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year for the last five years. So that certainly part of that money came from that overlay account, which was being added to at the rate of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, which was being used at about a hundred and fifty thousand a year. So it had been, almost become, well, it had become too large an amount. So that, I was just bringing out that we never, as you said, it should have been spent on one-time expenses, and it was not spent on salaries. It was spent on capital, OPEB, road. So, it doesn't have to be a, obviously a correction, but that's just, I wanted to mention that. That's it.
John, I hate to tell you, but you're wrong.
Oh, I figured you'd say that, so go ahead, why am I wrong?
If you look at the, the budget of twenty-nine million dollars, okay, that was recommended, there was no money put into OPEB at all, having to do with that. All the tax levy was spent on the budget of twenty-nine million dollars. And so, there was money in the previous year for OPEB, but there wasn't in fiscal twenty's budget, just so you know. That's not...
Well, we haven't done that yet. We would generally do that with, well, we did it for roads, OPEB and capital.
I'm talking about the budget, just the budget.
Right, we did not put it in there, because we put it in there, we transferred it out of the free cash, and the free cash is about a million one now. And so, if we had had a special town meeting, we would have suggested do OPEB. But we used it for capital. The capital has exceeded eight hundred and twenty-five thousand a year.
No, you didn't. If you go back and look at the budget, I'm sorry, John. If you go back and look at the budget, the tax levy, all of the tax levy was used for the town budget. So when you didn't put any money into the overlay, you took that money that you didn't normally put in there for an overlay reserve, and we used it for wages and expenses.
No, we didn't.
John, you gotta go back and look at the budget.
Right, well, that's your interpretation.
Well, it's not my interpretation, that's not...
The money for free cash, which the free cash was higher, because you didn't put money into the overlay, the free cash money was used to buy capital. Nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars last year. But the, part of that came from the ability of not putting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the overlay.
It doesn't, that doesn't have anything to do with it.
In your opinion, Rich.
That's my opinion, I know the facts.
Your opinion, Rich.
No, it's not. And the other thing is, you said, okay, you said there was a number of items in here. You used a hundred and... You used $183,000 worth of free cash to balance the budget too. The sheet's right here, I didn't make these sheets up.
We used it to buy cap, we would not have bought the capital, Rich.
It's not in the budget.
Doesn't make any difference, Rich.
It does make a difference.
There's a capital expenditure of $978,000. Where do you think the money came from?
Well, it's not out of the 29 million.
It came from free cash.
It's not out of the 29 million dollars that's in the budget.
So what? It comes from the free cash?
It makes a difference because next year we have to come up with the money.
To do what?
To subsidize these items.
For the overlay?
For both the overlay.
Well, you don't have to subsidize the overlay, the overlay still has an excess amount in there.
How much?
What would you, what would you have done with the $800,000 of overlay money?
Well, I was the one that brought it up two years ago. They should have taken that and used it for one-time items, but you didn't.
We did.
No, you didn't. Because you're using it to balance the budget.
No, no, the only, the only one that took money was you at the town meeting of $500,000 to give to the school that was earmarked for OPEB and you got it out of the reserve accounts and OPEB.
Well, what I would suggest you do is you go talk to the chairman of the Board of Assessors and ask him.
Which I did.
Which you did.
Which I did.
And you guys decided to not fund the overlay reserve, which is going to penalize the town.
No, it does not penalize the town.
It is penalizing the town going forward.
You would continue to add $250,000 a year to an account that has five years' worth of reserves in it?
No, it doesn't have five years' worth of reserves.
It did.
It averages.
$150,000 a year.
It averages more than that.
No, it doesn't.
Yes, it does, that doesn't include.
No, it doesn't. That comes from your town account?
Well, wait till we get to the budget process and we have to reduce it, we have to reduce the budget by a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Go away, we can.
As it happened.
Yep.
Okay.
But that does not affect the budget that was approved. You use that money to, for wages and expenses, which is wrong.
We use the free cash money.
I'm talking about.
To buy the cash. It flows into free cash.
It doesn't fall into free cash.
Your opinion, Rich.
No, it's a fact. Hey, listen, I've been involved 25 years, John. It doesn't get involved in the calculation of free cash, period. It doesn't.
It flows down there.
It doesn't.
If you did not spend it.
No, it doesn't, stays in the overlay surplus.
Okay, so.
Until the Board of Assessors vote to remove it from there.
We were voting to remove it, but it got to such a high level, they agreed not to add to it for two years.
You didn't vote to remove it.
We did remove, we've done that in the past.
Yes.
This time we voted, we voted not to add to it.
You hadn't done it in eight years.
What do you mean eight years?
Remove anything from the overlay reserve surplus, right? Is that right?
I don't know that.
I think, I don't know if I can say eight years, but I do think we voted back some money.
And the only one that went to the assessors was you to try to get money out of the overlay for the schools, according to the assessors.
That's not true.
Well, maybe you should have the assessors come and tell you that.
Well, I came because I wanted to know what was available to spend, okay? What was available in other counts that could be used as an alternative? And the overlay surplus, which had not been declared to be used in eight years, and that should have been used to purchase, usually you do, do one-time capital items. You didn't do that in that 2020.
We didn't do it during, that's true, we did it. You don't do, you don't have to take it out, you just stop adding to it, Rich.
We do both, both ways.
Okay, let's, let's try to.
Right, you were on the Board of Assessors.
Right.
You know the story.
I was on the Board of Assessors.
That got to over $800,000.
Right, and, and I, but still, I was the one that was complaining last year because we didn't add money. I would rather put the money in and then remove it out as a formal process, but.
And we had discussed that and we opted not to do that. It doesn't have to be done that way.
Just for the record, the state's the one that changed the breakdown by year. I actually liked it better that way so we knew all our obligations for the year were done and we could pull whatever was out. Now it's just in there as a lump sum. And I know at one point Todd said he was going to keep putting it in there according to the year, which I think is much more helpful that that was a state decision, not a Lakeville decision, just lump it all into one group, so. So. The overlay is what, at about 400,000?
It's over 400,000.
Right, right, and we use at least 150 to 165,000 a year.
Yeah.
So whether you choose to add to it and then do it during and add to it, it's a moot point.
Right, and I know that there is something pending, I don't know what, I asked a couple of weeks ago if the, you know, one big abatement issue was satisfied yet and I didn't really get a clear answer, so I have no idea how much that potential.
I can follow up with Coral and get you an answer?
Yeah, 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 please, because that was a bigger thing. Okay, so we're doing this.
Well, if anybody has any comments, I'll go into the letter.
But it's at the Planning Board, this.
The Board of Appeal.
So if we want to just go and talk about it, we don't have to, if there's more than one selectman there, we don't have to deliberate, we just talk about it, right? If we have any questions or anything?
What's that, Island Terrace?
Um, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, traditionally, we go to the meetings if we have an interest in it.
Yeah.
Traditionally, we say that we have no comment. And if we do have a comment, we usually say we want to go to the meetings.
Yeah.
We don't have to.
Yeah, but I know you and I have been there.
But the Planning Boards, right, I leave it to the zoning board.
Yep.
Approval in this particular case.
Right, and, and, you know, I think in an ideal world, in a perfect world, the town would have had a whole bunch of money and we could have bought the old Island Terrace property and left it as, you know, open space, but that's not realistic, we don't, we can't do that and it's not even our call, so I'm, I'm okay with his project. I don't know if it was changed significantly, but if it's going to be presented to the Planning Board, anything new, I'm going to try to make it there and if I have any questions at that point, I don't know.
I'm happy to take his $300,000 with the town.
Yeah, I just didn't know if either one of you were going to go.
No, I've gone to all those meetings.
I've seen, yeah, yeah. Are you going to go to that?
No, I just got the plan just a minute ago, so I don't.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
No comment.
Should we mention to the Planning Board that the selectmen need more than three days' notice to comment on something like this?
I mean, that would be helpful, I think.
So will we send a memo saying we have no comments or are we going to send, I mean?
Do we need to say we have no comment?
If they ask, if they ask, traditionally we've sent it with no comments, or if you want to go to the meeting, you can say no comments, I'll go to the meeting, whatever you, whatever you like.
Yeah, so as, I think as a board, we don't really have a comment. I mean, as individual board members, if we go to the meeting and we ask questions, I think that that's on us individually, so I would always specify that I wasn't talking on behalf of the board, I was talking as a citizen of Lakeville if I had a big concern or something. But as a board, I don't think anyone really.
According to the town bylaws, we're supposed to have it 10 days before the meeting.
So maybe we could ask them for a.
I'm not asking them to stand it, but that's what I want to say.
Yeah.
I know that the Conservation Commission, I think, is making a meeting tomorrow night.
I know, but.
And they haven't received it yet either, so they're supposed to not do anything until it's 10 minutes, 10 days before they get the plans because nobody's had a chance to review the plans and some of these things need to be enforced.
Right.
And the chairmans of the committees need to understand that that's what the bylaws say.
I have sat through his presentation a couple of times, so unless it's changed significantly.
I couldn't tell much from reading it briefly, I don't know.
Okay, well.
No, I mean, it's, it is what it is, I mean, it's sitting here now.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know, and it would be nicer, and you know what, the Planning Board themselves at a couple of meetings have said, you know, it'd be nicer if we got the plans a little earlier, so.
And what you do is you, you get it straight and you move them along to the next meeting.
Yep, so anyways, okay, who's this going to? You, Tracy?
Tracy, you going to hold it? I brought it with me, I'll lug it back.
All right.
It's only fair.
Okay, anything else or I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.